Engaged in office or her successor is appointed, passed and adopted the 28th day of December 2020.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Ludwick. We're happy to have you join the committee. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, President Dixon. I did start on the sewer subcommittee about two and a half years ago as an alternate. And then I graduated, I guess you could say, to a member as other people had left that committee. And then I resigned in December because technically I became the, pardon me, in November because I became town council. So now I'm headed back there. So there's some sort of force that wants me on this sewer subcommittee. And I look forward to working with the new members, such as council member LeBlanc, and with the members that were currently on the subcommittee with Chairman Skirka and the rest. I think there will be an interesting 2021. We have, as you've mentioned before, an upcoming sewer session or workshop, if you will. And we are looking at putting together some information and getting it over to Mr. Wazika to have for that session. So I look forward to the work we'll do together in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as mentioned, our second council representative is Mr. Jamie LeBlanc. So we have a full complement of council members on that commission. And we will be looking for people from the community to fill the vacancies that we have, not only on that commission, but also on some of the other commissions. And we will be advertising those vacancies very soon. So thank you so much. Item C1. Madam Clerk, please read the application information.
Application for new Victorian license, His Fruits of Coventry LLC, 2370 New London Turnpike.
Thank you. Mr. Wazika, any comments?
Police have done their background checks. We have no issues with that. Zoning officer and building officials are all satisfied. We have absolutely no issues with this license being granted.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the council to approve the license for His Fruits of Coventry LLC doing business as Tropical Smoothie Cafe?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. A second by Mrs. Shockley. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
President Dixon?
Yes?
I just had a quick question before we vote. I noticed the area that I believe this is going into, is it next to the Dunkin' Donuts? Is that the location of the vacancy that this is headed into?
I believe it is.
And I think it's, while you're looking at that, I think this is for, on the, I don't know what this is called, on page 20 of our packet, it says Tropical Smoothie Cafe. So I just was curious, is this, is this meant to be, the information I found online said something about wholesale fruits? Is this a, is this a cafe or is this a grocery store-like type of business?
It's a chain restaurant.
I haven't been to any of the others. It did look like there were a few like the,
Garden City.
Okay, yeah, there was another one of Providence, and I've seen a few others, but I haven't actually visited that.
I haven't either.
Ms. Ludwick, what is the question that you're asking?
I was curious if this was going into the location that's next to the Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
It's more of a curiosity as opposed to a reason to approve or not approve.
It does appear as though it's on, right past McDonald's, across the street from Cumberland Farms, that vacant spot is what it looks like.
Yep, exactly.
That's good news. I believe that's been vacant for some time.
It's listed as 2370 New London Turnpike.
We always welcome new business, that's for sure.
Agreed.
Just for a note, I just want to make sure that, I don't know if it's our job as the council, but the other, if it is right in the same plaza as Dunkin' Donuts, is there an issue as they both would serve some similar products?
That would be up to the owners of the property, not us.
Okay.
I'm fine to proceed with the vote. Thank you, President Dixon.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, great. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is four yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you. D1, Agenda D1, Procedures. Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item.
Discussion and/or action on resolution pertaining to Town Council rules and procedures.
Okay, the procedure resolution was approved in 2009. Everything in red is an updated, is an update proposed by our legal counsel, Mr. Nick Gorham. He recommended changes to put our resolution in compliance with the Coventry Charter and the open meetings law, Rhode Island General Law, Article 4246. We will proceed in this manner. I will accept a motion to approve the resolution, then a second. Then we will have a discussion, at which time any member may offer one or more amendments, one at a time. If there's a motion to amend, then I will seek a second, open the motion up for discussion, and then we will vote on each amendment as it is presented. So first, we need a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have that?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, the discussion is now open. Any member have any question, we can go item, excuse me, section by section, or we can jump around depending upon what you found that you would like to discuss. Ms. Ludwick?
I did review the items that are in red. I have no concerns with what is being suggested. I have two separate items I'd like to put forward.
Certainly.
The first one is, in several locations, and to give a very specific example, on page seven of the revision, of the, actually, it's page 29 of 31 of our packet, 6.2 Agenda Requests. This mentions, "All items for agenda consideration must be submitted through the council president or his designee, designate, and received by the council president or his designee." I'd like to request that we consider making that language more inclusive and say, his and hers, or he and she, or some other type of pronoun. I noticed in other areas of the document, it does recognize his and her. However, in this specific section, it does not.
Okay, so the amendment, I'm thinking the amendment would be to make the document gender neutral.
Yes.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote on the amendment to modify the document so that it is gender neutral. Roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
The amendment is approved with four yeas and no nays. So now we will have to vote on the motion to change the resolution, to change the document so that it is gender neutral. We've approved the amendment, now we have to approve the motion. So do I have a motion to modify the document so it is gender neutral?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is four yeas and no nays. The motion passes. Are there any other amendments that any council member would like to recommend?
If I may ask, is he she sufficient before we go through it? Is he she sufficient?
Could we do they them when we can, Jen?
He she is not really great.
They them, perhaps?
We have to go through it, and it could be, say, the designate. So in some cases, he or she could be replaced by the. You really have to go through the document and look at each situation and make a determination what would be the best. But we want to refrain from he she or his her.
We try to avoid that, but if we can.
It's possible.
Yep.
When I was on the Charter Review Commission in 2012, I made the whole shot a gender neutral. So I know it can be done. Thank you. Thank you for noting, thank you for noting that, Ms. Ludwick. Now, Mrs. Shockley, question?
Yes, just in, Section 2.1, it states that the town council will meet on the second and fourth Monday of each month, excepting the months of June, July, and August at 7:00 PM. We don't do that.
That is correct. You can make, you can make an amendment to remove June.
I was wanting to remove the time. Because we don't meet at 7:00 o'clock. So if there has to be a time, I would recommend it being 6:00 o'clock to open, an open meeting. I know often we meet earlier for executive sessions, so I'm not sure how the document should read.
And actually, this evening, we started our public meeting at 6:00.
Right.
So, Mr. Gorham, how would you suggest that we amend this? We have to take out June because we do meet twice a month in June.
Yes. Okay, so I believe the charter says once a month, at least.
At least.
Yes.
So I'm not sure why we're excluding the summer months.
It's historically been, the summer months, July and August, have historically been reduced to the one, one meeting a month because a lot of people are on vacation, traveling. So that's why we've done it. It's been seven years I've been here. We've done it.
Okay, it's just excluding two.
It doesn't, it doesn't exclude us meeting two, three, four times and having special meetings throughout the summer months if we so choose. And if there's business that needs to be conducted. But this document, this document does say June, and we typically do meet twice a month in June.
So do you want to just cross out June, for starters, at least?
Delete June.
Okay.
Amendment to delete June.
And as for the other suggestion by Member Shockley, I mean, pick a time. If you want to do 6:00 o'clock, that does make sense. Frankly, since, since we started doing these meetings on Zoom, six is like the default time. So I'm not saying we're going to be doing Zoom meetings and we're going to have COVID through June and July and August. But if you want to meet at six, you just can say so in the rule.
Can we say approximately 6:00 PM? So it's 6:00, 6:30. I'm just making a suggestion.
About no later than 7:00.
I like to be less specific, if possible.
Or any time to be, any time to be announced, or a time to be posted?
No later than 7:00 PM.
No later than seven?
I think that's, that's pretty good. I think that'll.
So we'll need a motion to amend Section 2.1 to delete the word June and to change the time of 7:00 PM to no later than seven. So I need an amendment to that, for stated.
I make a motion to amend Section 2.1.
2.1.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Yeas for, nays no, zero. The motion passes or the amendment passes. Okay, now we need a motion to accept 2.1 as amended.
Wouldn't we just do all this as a whole?
Respectfully, Madam President, I believe that you can do each of the amendments as you go through. And those amendments amend the motion. The original motion made by Member Ludwig, I think it was, was to adopt the rules as drafted.
Right.
Of these amended, each of these amendments require only one vote to amend the motion. It's not necessary to do two. If you want to do two, just to be sure that you're done with 2.1, that's fine, but it is not necessary.
It's not necessary. Okay, it's fine. So we'll just get a motion and second and vote on the amendment and then move along. Is that correct?
That's, that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay, that's 2.1. Ms. LeBlanc?
In Section 7.3, it talks about when there's a proposed ordinance or an amendment where it needs to be published. But nowhere in A or B does it reference the town's website. So I just, I don't know if we want to throw in some language that states in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the town as well as the town's website, because I do know a lot of people do visit our town's website. And then my only other suggestion in that same 7.3 paragraph A is when there is a proposed ordinance or amendment, I understand that these rules say that we just read the amendment by title. But I'm suggesting that there is a summary of significant changes also stated when that title is read. Those would be my two changes to that paragraph.
I think that's in our charter right now. There should be a summary.
Could you repeat the last part?
But could you please state the amendment as you would like it stated in Rule 7.3?
Sure. Every proposed ordinance and/or amendment thereto, excepting, except emergency ordinances as defined in Section 3.16 of the Town Charter, shall be read a first time by title, as well as a summary provided of significant changes at the meeting at which it is introduced and shall therefore, thereafter be published in full in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the town and published on the town's website as required by the charter before acting upon such ordinance or amendment. Because I have, I've actually attended town council meetings where just the title has been discussed and there wasn't any discussion on significant changes.
That is correct.
Under 3.16, the first reading is really just to acknowledge the presentation of the ordinance amendment or the ordinance, if it's a new ordinance, then a new ordinance. But I see what you're driving at. You would just like something more explicit. I think you said, Member LeBlanc, even a summary of the changes, for example. I think we could do that without running afoul of the charter at all. It would just be, in addition to the charter, this council has decided that at the first reading, a summary of the amendment will be read to the, just be read at the meeting. Is that what you're driving at?
Absolutely.
So why don't we say, I think you had the language when you read it. Do you remember where you inserted it?
Right after.
Share your screen, excuse me. You have this written. Can you share your screen?
No, I don't. Oh, I have it written in note form, on paper, not electronically. But just, it's right after by title with a summary of significant changes, essentially.
By title. I don't see that.
Third sentence of paragraph, Section 7.3, paragraph A.
Section 3.16.
Third line, I should say.
Title. Okay, by title and a summary of, and could you tell me what you wanted to put in?
By title with a summary of significant changes.
A summary of significant changes. Very good. And just for anybody who's listening or council members, the first reading is followed by a second, a second reading, so to speak, that requires a public hearing where the public can come and testify and a much greater fleshing out of the issues that might be engendered by the proposed amendment. But this, this would just get that out there in a more truncated form at the first reading. So I've written in after the word, "first time by title with a summary of significant changes."
And then, and then the only other change to that same section was, you know, in full in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the town and published on the town's website.
I have that.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to clarify.
I support that amendment because I've been on the council and we've read a title. And I'm, I sit there and I wonder, what does the public understand of what this title actually means? And I think that this creates a little bit more transparency for the public so they know what type of business that the council is intending to conduct in a future hearing or the second hearing. So I think it's a good idea to have the summary. I support that.
Remember, Dixon, would you mind if I just inquired of the town clerk to make sure that she has it? I've written it down in my notes, but it's always good to, okay. Joanne, do you have the changes?
Yes, in Section 7.3, little A, it says, "Read a first time by title with a summary with significant changes." And then he also wants to put, "published on the town website after the newspaper section."
And published, and published on the town's website.
Correct.
Yes, good.
Not to be tactical, but that says, as required by the charter. The town website is not required by the charter. We'd be better off just putting that at a new sentence at the end.
You sure?
It's required to be posted in three locations.
I know it says the website, it specifies the website somewhere. Possibly, I'm just thinking of the wrong.
We always do the website. We've always done the website on any, any amendment that's going, that's going down with the full amendment. And that's part of what we've always done. I mean, you may be right on, on that, but I didn't think it was specified in the charter on the website. I don't remember seeing it by charter on there. It could be, though.
I'm reading first reading. This is Charter Section 3.16B. First reading, "Every proposed ordinance other than an emergency ordinance shall be read a first time by title at the meeting at which it is introduced, and a summary shall be published in one or more newspapers of general circulation in the, in the town and in full on the town's official website." All right, so it goes on to say, "and displayed in two or more locations in conspicuous fashion." So it's, I think the amendment is actually correct.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment as presented and read by our town clerk?
I'll make that motion.
Oops, sorry.
Ms. LeBlanc, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ludwick. Any more discussion on this amendment? Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote. Do I have it? Okay.
We're still amending them one at a time?
Okay.
Yes.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Maybe a four yeas, no, no nays. The amendment passes. Thank you. Are there any other amendments? Ms. Ludwick?
In Section 3, for the Code of Conduct, there are several items that talk about the Town Council Code of Conduct. And obviously, you know, these were written at a time that we were not doing town council meetings on Zoom. I would like to suggest that we consider putting in a statement that says something to the effect of, you know, "The Town Council Members shall observe the same rules of procedure and decorum applicable to citizens and other visitors." And so the reason for this is, if you notice under citizens and other visitors in Section 3.3, there are such things in here as not talking on cell phones, not smoking in the town offices, et cetera. And I do know that this is a professional group of people, and I'd like to suggest that we state something that we need to also follow these rules. I have noticed in some of my subcommittee meetings, there are a few people who enjoy a good cigar. And I appreciate that in 2020, things are a little bit different than in the past. However, I think the public expects a lot, as they should, from the town council. And in my opinion, we may be able to serve that simply by saying we should also observe those rules ourselves.
What suggestion are you making, Ms. Ludwick, to which section and what is the wording?
For the Code of Conduct, I'd suggest adding a section after Section D, so this would be a new Section E.
New Section E, right. 3.1E. And the wording?
Members of the Town Council shall observe the same rules of procedure and decorum applicable to citizens and visitors. And I'm wondering if we include during conference calls or Zoom meetings or, or something to that effect. Maybe we can get a little help from Mr. Gorham in the wording there.
You might just say public meetings.
As public meetings.
President Dixon?
Your own.
Joanne, do you have that?
Well, I have, "Members of Town Council should apply same rules."
Shall observe, shall observe the same rules of decorum.
Can I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
Sure. I would say, E, "Town Council members shall adhere to the same rules of decorum and, what was it, behavior?" Member Ludwig, same rules of decorum.
Procedure and decorum applicable to citizens and visitors during public meetings.
It will be Section G, subsection G of 3.1.
That would be fine. Yeah.
G, not E, right.
It would be Section G.
Yeah, G.
Page 26 of 31.
So, okay, "Town Council members shall adhere to the same rules of decorum and procedure," I think you said. Applicable to visitors, to visitors and.
Citizens and visitors.
And visitors, very good.
And citizens and visitors is Section 3.3.
Thank you. Why don't we just say, "As provided in Section 3.3," just to make sure it's clear?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Do you have the reading? Do you have the motion, Madam Clerk?
I believe I have, I have the majority of it. I'll be able to listen to it again on the video to get the exact wording.
But as we vote, I want the exact wording. So, Mr. Gorham, do you have it?
I believe I do.
Okay, good.
This will be Section G of 3.1. And it reads in its entirety, "G, Town Council members shall adhere to the same rules of decorum and procedure applicable to citizens and visitors as provided in Section 3.3."
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the amendment to 3.1 with the addition of Section G?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Do I have any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley?
Yes.
Four yeas, no nays. The amendment passes. Thank you. Are there any other amendments? Four yeas, no nays. The amendment passes. Thank you. Are there any other amendments?
I had two very small ones, President Dixon.
I have a couple myself, but we'll, we'll go to yours first. Go ahead.
Are you sure you don't want to go first?
Oh, no, I want to see you get to the punch, so I
Section, section 2.2, I think we just need to put the, insert the word section on the fourth line down. It says accordance with 2.3. I think we just need to add the word section 2.3, just to be consistent throughout this whole document. I told you, they're very small. And then
Madam Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So we're adding the word section before 2.3?
Correct.
And then on, in section 3.4, down, we have two subsection symbols. I think we only need one. So I told you, they were, they were relatively small. The last one is, I just want to hold on. I just want to make sure you guys see that there's two subsection symbols in 3.4. I think we just need to remove one of them. And then the last comment is in section 6.2, which Councilmember Ludwig had brought up. I was just questioning why it's the second Friday. I, I think we should maybe change that to say, you know, two days, three days before a town council meeting or five days before a town, any town, any scheduled town council meeting, rather than just the second Friday prior to the next regular meeting. Just a suggestion.
We, we can ask the council, from my point of view, council members may submit agenda items to me at any time.
Always say that.
Yes, we, they can submit it at any time. To put in a designated time seems like an artificial deadline. I think agenda items can come in at any time and when
But I think it would have to be three days before the meeting so that it can get posted, right?
An agenda, a council member might suggest an agenda item. But if the agenda is so full for that particular meeting that's going to come up, it may not be possible to put that agenda item on, or there may be some legal reasons why we may need some discussion before it gets on the agenda. And it may be that the agenda item might not be able to be put on the agenda for, for some kind of legal or confidential reasons. So I don't want to restrict people to have to send something in the second Friday, but we can't guarantee that if something comes in, it's going to be immediately on the next meeting.
If I, if I may, Madam Clerk, the problem with that is there's a lot of background work that has to go on with developing these agendas. We need to post agenda 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So that typically means Saturdays and Sundays don't count. So we've got to post the agenda. If it's a Monday meeting like now, as in next Monday's meeting, we will have to post that by Thursday, this, Wednesday, this week. We've only got a short window to get these done. The idea of the second Friday before gave us more time to be able to get that done and get the background work done. And if we get something dumped on us on, say, Wednesday, the agenda is going to be posted on Thursday, we don't have a lot of time to do what needs to be done. We don't get to do our work as well. So the, the second Friday means Monday typically is the agenda day, we set the agenda. And then if it's something minor, we can always add that in. But if it's major, it takes time. And to allow it to go on up to Wednesday or Thursday just makes it impossible to get that on the agenda. By setting that time, that timeframe on a Friday, it does make it easier and we've got more time to get it developed. If it's a critical issue, we can always get it on for 48 hours in advance.
Just, just for clarification, I think eight, 6.2, taken to its extreme means that you have to, you have to submit the agenda request
Over a week ahead.
And almost 10 days before.
Yes.
I think. I, um, it doesn't allow for any adjustment. I mean, I think the president probably in her discretion can allow something anyway, but you might want to put that in there.
It, it's 10 days in advance, Nick, but it's only four days of work before that agenda item has to be on, be posted with the Secretary of State's office. So 10, it sounds like a long time, but the reality of it is it's not a lot of time on workdays to get all of that done.
Okay.
That's the thing with that.
But this is just saying for consideration. So this isn't saying to be definitively put on an agenda, you need to get it to us this far in advance so that we can make sure there's no legal issues or different matters that you've been speaking of. It seems if there are no legal issues, President Dixon, you're saying, if you get me a topic to discuss before the agenda needs to be posted, I'll consider it for the agenda.
Absolutely.
So I think as long as we're saying it needs to be presented to the president before the agenda needs to be posted, two or three business days before the meeting. It seems that's sufficient if we're just saying agenda consideration.
So we could, we could add that for agenda, it already says for agenda consideration. And I guess I, I'm okay with it as written, but I mean, I want you all to know that as president, I will accept agenda items at any time.
And all I'm saying is if it comes in on Wednesday and the posting has to go out on Thursday, we may not be able to do our due diligence and get it there, even if, so that's all I'm saying. By setting that up, you cannot definitively say we'll still be on the agenda because we haven't had time to do what we need to do, get it set and get it on there and get the background paperwork.
Well, the other reason, the other reason that it's not necessarily on the agenda is that the, the rules as written still give the president the discretion to place things on the agenda or not. So I, I think the point Member Schockley made is well taken. It's just for consideration.
So are there any recommended changes then for 6.2? Because we still have to just, we still have to vote on the recommended amendment change for 2.2, 3, 4. Is there anything else by, for 6.2? Okay.
I would rather lock it in less. I mean, if we're making these as our policies and procedures, I'd rather not lock us into, to, you know, the second Friday prior. It seems like one which we should give ourselves more wiggle room on. By saying prior to the agenda needing to be posted.
Okay, what is your recommendation then to eliminate the second Friday?
Yes, but state, you know, prior to the agenda needing to be posted for the meeting.
Prior to the date.
And I want, I defer to Attorney Goram as well.
Lost my place. What rule was it we were looking at? I was trying to Sorry, yeah. What was it? 6.2? Okay, let me see how we can fix that. All items for agenda consideration must be submitted through the council president or the designee. We've already, already have that amendment. And received by the council president or the designee by the end of the business day on the second Friday prior to the next regular meeting of the town council. And you want to make that a little more flexible, Member Schockley? So, hmm, um, um, let's see. I guess you could say unless good cause is shown, something like that.
I'm not sure what that means, Mr. Goram.
It means that it's flexible.
Oh, okay.
I, I often call it the weasel language. It's just a way to give it a little more liability. So if you say unless good cause is shown. I mean, it's, it's always going to be up to the president anyway. So if the president can say, you know, Member Schockley was a couple of days late, but she gave me a good reason and I'm going to put it on the agenda. You don't want this to prevent things from being on the agenda. I think if we just put unless good cause is shown. I think that gives you what
And where would that be placed, Mr. Goram, unless?
At the very end, unless good cause is shown.
Okay. So because we've had, we've had a great deal of discussion, a little bit on 2.2, 3, 4, and now 6.2. Madam Clerk, could you please read the amended, the amendment changes? First, 2.2.
So in special meeting, section 2.2, do you want me to read the whole thing or you just want to add?
Is the addition, is the addition of the word?
The addition of the word section before 2.3.
Correct. Now 3, 4.
3, 4, we're taking out the symbol and the second to last sentence before 11-45-1.
Correct. And then 6.
6.2, we're going to add at the very end after town council, unless good cause is shown.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right, do we have a motion for the three amendments or the amendment in 2.2, 3.4, and 6.2 as read by Madam Clerk?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Ben Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kim Schockley?
Yes.
Okay, four yeas, no nays. The amendment passes. Thank you. Are there any other amendments, recommendations or suggestions by members of the council? Mrs. Schockley?
Just one quick question and then a paging issue. Numbers in 3.3D, what has made us decide to solidify further that people can't have food or beverages in the meeting? We're trying to err on the side of caution of people bringing inappropriate food and beverages, which I think we I just wonder if, why we have this set in stone if the meeting ran late and you have a granola bar in your bag and you're a member of the, you know, you worked to get to this meeting. I guess I don't see an issue there. And I don't see why we're solidifying it so strictly in our, if you have diabetes and, you know.
I, I can think of just two things. It might be allergies, make, obviously, we have to be concerned about allergies. And then if someone has chips and they're chewing and
I see so many
If somebody has a problem, they can step out and go to the hallway and, and have their granola bar if they get diabetes. I think you're opening up a can of worms, no
I'm fine with it. I just wanted to, I guess because we were further solidifying it with the word any, I, I wanted to check and see. And then I just wanted to say, there's a pagination issue with these. We have two pages, five and six.
Yes.
So just to, you know, fix that when
To be corrected when we do the final.
I tried mightily to overturn Microsoft Word and I failed on the pagination. I thought I'd leave that for later, but thank you.
Nick, I was trying to take the hit for you. You didn't have to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm going to offer an amendment recommendation for section 6.1. The agenda no later than five calendar days before a regular town council meeting. I would like to change that to six calendar days, so no later than six calendar days. The reasoning for that is to give the town manager and the staff a little bit more time to prepare the agenda. It also provides an opportunity for members of the council to get their packets earlier because the materials will be ready. So it gives you a little bit more time because I know we're getting our packets on Friday night. Sometimes there's lots to read and we have to be ready by Monday. You all are working people and I'd like to give people a little bit more time, including the staff. So I'm recommending that it says no later than six calendar days. That doesn't mean we won't do it earlier, but it's no later than six calendar days. And I'm going to ask for an additional sentence for the end of 6.1. And it says, the draft agenda shall be approved by the council president and legal counsel prior to posting. That means that the agenda will be discussed, a draft will be prepared. It will be sent to the council president and legal counsel for a final approval before it is posted. So there are two changes. One, changing five days, five calendar days to six calendar days. And the second is the addition of the draft agenda shall be approved by the council president and legal counsel prior to posting. Any discussion?
I, I think the second is a great idea to make sure the same set of eyes is looking at every agenda that goes out to make sure that there aren't mistakes that cause us to have to cancel meetings.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
I think one of us has to make a motion to make, to approve the amendment. But if not, I, I'll, I'll say yes. I just wanted to call it.
Excuse me. Thank you. I guess I should have phrased my recommendation as a motion, which I did not do. So thank you for correcting me. I make a motion that we modify section 6.1 to change five calendar days to six calendar days and that we add the sentence at the end. The draft agenda shall be approved by the council president and legal counsel prior to posting. It's official now. Any second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anne Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Schockley?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Then I have one more motion that I would, or amendment I would like to add. It's to add section 9.1. Want to share my screen? Mr. Wazika, you have to allow me to share my screen.
You have that, ma'am?
Thank you. This is, this is the new section that I'm proposing. Members of the council are allowed, can everyone see the screen?
You're not sharing it yet.
No.
I'm not sharing it?
Yes, we can see your screen now.
Excellent, okay. Members of the council are allowed to express individual views during a town council meeting or outside a town council meeting. Members also may communicate informational messages to inform the public of future posted agendas, discussions recorded on approved minutes, and publicly recorded votes. While communicating with the public outside a meeting, except as noted above, a member shall be cleared that the member is expressing an individual view, not the view of the town council. No member of the council shall use any communications format to bully and or apply pressure on a council member or town staff for any reason. So I'm suggesting that, we've seen a lot of messages on social media and it's caused a lot of conversation. It puts a very bad light on our council. We're trying to, as we said before, even with our amendments, always present a professional view of the council working together as a concerted effort to improve our town. So I'm suggesting this amendment and we can make them, I can, I'll make a motion myself that we add section 9.1 as written. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions, concerns?
President Dixon?
Yes.
I think I know what you're driving at in that final section, but I do have a bit of a, a concern regarding the First Amendment. I, I think applying pressure to any elected official, even from one elected official to another, is a right that everyone is a right that everyone has the right to exercise. And I just, I don't want to see us go into a situation where we're going to have the ACLU attacking this freshly minted rule because it violates the First Amendment. It's a close call and I know exactly, I don't know exactly, but I know, I think I know what you're driving at. But I'm not sure it could do. I, I'd like a little time to think about it, maybe try to write something that might be a little more compliant with the First Amendment. We can always take up the rules and discuss them again. But I, I am concerned. I, and I would, I would be, you know, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say so.
I respect your opinion, Mr. Goran. So if I were to offer this amendment based on the first three statements, get a second discussion and vote on that, then that will give you time and we can always come back to the resolution and add something else if needed. Would that work?
First, yeah, I think the first three simply clarify that members of the council can speak with impunity, under these rules at least, outside of a town council meeting. Yes, so you could vote on the first three sections of 9.1 as proposed tonight. And if you could give me a little time to try to rewrite or just put a couple of changes in that fourth section, I would appreciate it. Yes.
That would be fine. Any other comments by members of the council? All right, so I'm going to make a motion to amend the the procedures, town council rules of procedure to include section 9.1, the first three statements. Do I have a second to add this to the resolution and to the document?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? A roll call vote, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley? Yes.
And so it's four yeas, no nays. The amendment passes. And Mr. Goran, you'll get back to us on some wording. We can always come back to the resolution and determine whether the council would like to expand on 9.1 and there may be other ideas that council members may have that they may want to add to this.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate it.
No problem at all. And Mrs., Madam Clerk, I'll send you this.
One comment I just want to, I would like to make, President Dixon?
Yes.
I mean, nowhere in this section 9.1, and maybe we can obviously discuss this at a future meeting, but it doesn't say that we're allowed to have meetings, like maybe coffee with a councilman or those type of things. It kind of lays out only a couple of things that we are allowed to do here. I, I just, I get a little concerned when we don't call out, like, can we have a work session with just two council people? Obviously, it's not the full council. So I just get a little concerned on limitations. That's all.
The problem that we have when two council people meet, it's considered a possible rolling quorum and that's against the open meeting law. So we have been, we've been avoiding having meetings of two people because if I were to have a meeting with, say, Mrs. Shockley and we're just having coffee and we're discussing, you know, what schools kids go to and so on and so forth, what we did for Christmas, that's no problem. But if I start talking to her about my proposal for 9.1 and then she should mention it to someone else, it's considered a rolling quorum or a rolling discussion and that would not be appropriate. And I understand what you're saying. Having coffee with someone is, is not, is certainly agreeable and certainly allow, allowed. But when that conversation turns to something that the council is going to be discussing, then it becomes a potential problem. So that's my concern about that. And we can ask Mr. Goran for, for a comment on that.
And I wasn't just talking, maybe a one-off with a person in coffee. I was talking about, we've had a couple of work sessions about the turbines and solar farms and out in, out in Western. And I mean, it was two council people. And we, and that was loud. I was having more those type of meetings, that's all. But this, I would like to hear Mr. Goran's ideas.
Mr. Goran?
Sure. A conversation between two council members is perfectly appropriate. But you are correct. It does heighten the possibility that either an intentional or inadvertent violation of the rolling quorum rule would take place thereafter. You know, the, the rolling quorum rule is one of the most undefined concepts in the OMA and it's really not even explicitly in the OMA. It's been produced by the Attorney General opinions by and large, which are through like doctrinal discussion of when a rolling quorum has taken place. And I think the rule to just not get too much beyond two people talking about something, it's well intended, but I just, I don't think that, I don't think that, well, in every instance, if you go beyond two people, it doesn't in every instance violate the rolling quorum rule. But because it's so poorly defined, I think the kind of approach that you've suggested taking makes some sense. I mean, you'll never have a violation of the rolling quorum rule if you have only two people discuss it. On the other hand, you're going to miss a lot of good idea, a lot of good ideas being exchanged. And I wish I could just give a more definitive statement about the rolling quorum rule, but I can't. I think the first three sections of 9.1, which the council is considering, are fine. Does that answer the question?
It does in a certain way. I just, it almost, I feel like it almost limits us a little bit on our opinions and our conversations. That's all, but.
I don't.
I just wanted to make that comment.
Remember LeBlanc, I don't think it's a hard and fat, what I'm trying to say is it really depends on the circumstances and whether someone is trying to advance an idea without having it done at a public meeting, advance, for example, passage of some new ordinance and just building support. That would be a violation of the rolling quorum rule. When two people and two council members innocently have a conversation and then just by coincidence, two others have it, that's not a violation. Or if one of those two has a conversation with someone else, I don't think that's a violation either.
Appreciate the insight.
Thank you.
Mrs. LeBlanc, thank you for bringing up your concerns. I've dealt with this for, well, the six years I was on the school committee, two years now. And it's always a concern about whether we're violating some rule and we do want to promote as much good conversation as we possibly can. I don't think that this, these statements prevent anyone from making or having conversations, but it simply says really that if you're talking in public, people need to understand that you're expressing your own individual view and not the view of the council. Because if it appears that you are representing the council in your view, that may be, put us in a very precarious position. So I think the, this comment here, make sure people understand that it's your view and not the view of the council. So it can't be misinterpreted by people that's saying, oh, the council said such and such, or the council is, oh, another statement, oh, the council is going to vote on the budget in a certain way. That's your maybe individual view, but it's not necessarily the view of the council as we had never even discussed how we were going to vote on the, on the budget. So we just need to be careful when we're communicating with the, with the public so that we don't incite people to believe that we're going to be doing something when even members ourselves have never discussed it and we don't know what we're doing yet until we get to a formal meeting. So.
Just to clarify, I, I never brought that up, so I, I just wanted to, I don't know if you're stating that because I incited some type of movement or anything. I just, that is not the case, so.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm not implying that at all. I'm just listening through all these years of serving in the public, of going on, what is it now? About 10 and a half years in Coventry. And I've seen, you know, a lot of situations. So we just want to make sure that people are clear that they're expressing an individual view and not the view of the, the council or the public body for which they are serving. So we have a second. We've had some discussion. Any more discussion? I don't want to close discussion if someone else wants to say anything. Okay, so I make a motion, we have a motion, we have a second, Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley? Yes.
Four yeas, no nays. The amendment passes. So do we have a motion now to approve the resolution as amended? With all the amendments that we have discussed this evening?
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other more discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley? Yes.
Four yeas, no nays. The motion passes with amendments. Thank you so much, everyone. We'll now move on to public comment. Mr. Wazika, would you please open public comment for us?
If anyone is interested in speaking for the council, please raise your hand and I will bring you into the meeting. We currently have one person. I'm going to be bringing in El Murray. I'm going to assume this is Luke. Luke, please state your full name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Lucas Murray, 121 Hill Farm Camp Road. M U R R A Y. Did I hit everything? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the thoughtful conversation tonight. I hung in here because I really wanted to talk to the solar, but I appreciated the dialogue on the rules as well. I just wanted to touch upon the solar. First of all, I wanted to, just as a resident, thank you for, to the town manager and for the town for thinking about this project on use of land that otherwise would not be used for the town or revenue generation. It's an important project. I'm very familiar with the landfill, having dumped my own leaves there years ago and having a very good friend of mine, God rest his soul, who lived across the street from there and dealt with the blowing dust for many years when I was younger. Couple of things about the project. They mentioned interconnection permits. Those are very difficult to get. They do take sometimes years to get. And so I'm glad to hear that that's progressed. But one thing I just wanted to bring up from my perspective, I understand the reasoning for not going out to bid with this. I understand the reasoning behind getting in bed, so to speak, with one party. I was glad to hear Mr. Wazika talk to having a third party look at the agreement, the lease and the, knowing what you don't know, because they get complicated when it comes to solar companies. As you heard, there's a large swing on the lease revenue that can be generated. So I just wanted to weigh in and having solar experience, that is extremely important. So on the school side, I just will say that we had Balance Rock do our assessment on the net metering. The other thing I wanted to say is I know that we have talked to the town before about net metering. I don't know if they're net metered now. But if you're not, just for example, in Warwick, we tied into the Kilvert Street project, which is a six megawatt array. So if you're familiar with the airport, that is what the size of a six megawatt looks like. We tied into that and the West Shore Road development. We are currently net metered out in Warwick. That's saving approximately 30% off our electric bill for that city. The school side, I would give, wanted to mention, and I'll have to talk to the superintendent about this, but I know there's some issues with our off-taking with Reventi, which was our initial preferred project. I believe that project got sidelined, so that may be something up for discussion as well with this project. Because I know they're probably looking for off-takers. The other thing I wanted to mention, I know that they talked about the Viewshed from Arnold Road. And as we know, the one comment we get is the landfill, the height of Mount Arnold. Well, I think it's a great project. Once you put solar panels on it, it may be a little bit obtrusive to some residents driving by is to ask the solar company to come up with a landscape buffering plan. That side along our road is not south facing. I believe there's enough right of way there between the small burn that was built to contain water and maybe adding some trees, some evergreen buffer to buffer the panels from the Viewshed, even though it's high. You're down low and if you look at it, I'm just looking at Google Earth right now and looking at street view, you could certainly buffer some panels, especially if they're going to be located along the slopes. So most solar developers are pretty amenable to that, but they're only amenable if you ask. So I, you know, that's just a suggestion from me. And the last thing I'll say is I know they talked about proprietary systems, things like that. Essentially, what you're looking at, this has been done for many years. I worked on a couple up in Massachusetts myself, is a synthetic infill turf system and panels on top of that. The panel attachment system they're talking about is, sounds as though it's proprietary. I've only dealt with ballast systems. But just, it's important to have that third party review, we just to verify, trust but verify what they're counting. Because some of that system is proprietary, some of it is not. There are developers putting solar on infill synthetic turf for 20 years before it really came to Rhode Island. So it's not the only system out there. However, I, I don't want to sideline this because I do think it's an important project and I understand the reasons for connecting with this company and they've already done a lot of the legwork. So I just want to make sure that the agreement, as a resident of the town, is the best agreement we can get. So I appreciate the time and the energy that went into this project and hopefully my comments are well taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
This is Dixon. Just one thing I'd like to comment on there, on that, is the fact that the, it's the turf that we're worrying about on maintaining the warranty on that. And they're, this company is the only one that's authorized to put on top without voiding the warranty. And that's the whole key with why it's unfortunately a sole, a sole source and that's the reason on it. But we have no one else at this point who has their hand up.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to wish each of you a happy new year. May you all be blessed with peace, joy and very good health. And may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Even though we'll see you on the 30th, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I wish you a happy new year on the 30th, too. We have meetings all this week. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Ms. Ludwig, do you have your hand up?
Oh, no, but I'll second it. Yes.
Sure you do. Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Joey, and you're on, Madam Clerk, you're on mute.
Ann Dixon?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Kimberly Shockley? Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Goran, for your wise counsel this evening. Thank you, Mr. Wazika, for adding all these additional comments to help us understand a variety of topics tonight. We greatly appreciate your, your help with us and your assistance. Happy new year to you, but I will be seeing you again and again this week.
Yes, ma'am.
It's our pleasure. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Bye.